Fellow councillors, the next item on the agenda, I would like to move from item seventeen down to item number six, which is the Beeston Town Hall. Okay. councillor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you for moving the item of the agenda that all the fellow stakeholders here have come to hear us talk about the Town Hall, and I think it's quite right to do so. I'm going to start by just a little potted history of where we've been and how we've got to where we are over the last year or so. We first floated the idea that, on the basis that we no longer needed this building for its current purpose, that we move out of it and look for an alternative use for it. We consulted the public, and it was very clear that people wanted to see this building remain on this site, and we were very pleased then to start work on trying to find community uses for the building, which would retain the building, hopefully improve the building, the fabric of it, and find a long-term and sustainable use for the building. But at the same time, allow us to make the savings that we need to make by vacating the building, avoid us having to spend up to a half a million pounds on essential repairs over the next few years to this building, the lifts, the boilers, the roof, various other things. And so, through that process emerged a number of community groups who were interested in putting bids together and business cases to take the building on for the future. During the course of that, there was an application to have the building listed, which was declined by Historic England, and various public consultations along the way, not least of which our own budget consultation back in January, at which sixty percent of people -- it was the largest item that people told us they wanted us to save money on, sixty percent of people said, which has reduced the number of office buildings that we had. Just to put that into context, the next highest level of response was just twenty percent. So, strong public feeling that we shouldn't be paying out of the council tax for office buildings that we don't require. In July, fourth of July of this year, we met here and decided that the two bids that were on the table, pleased as we were to have them, weren't quite good enough to be accepted at that stage. We still wanted to find a community use for the building, and so we allowed another three and a half months for those groups to work on improving those bids. Couple of months later, towards the end of August, the Beeston Town Hall Community Project informed us that their proposal would remain as submitted previously and as effectively rejected by council on the fourth of July. On the same day, Cornerstone Redeemer Church delivered to us an improved bid, and within that, there was several improvements to the community benefit, which members have, and I think that the members of the public in the gallery have as well, within the business case that Cornerstone delivered to us. But in short, they include a Globe Cafe, which helps to help international students, carol service, a picnic in the park last year, which was free, which had over three hundred local people attending it. They plan to deliver English language classes here, midweek community group, partnership with Hope Nottingham, which we mentioned earlier on, to deliver employment pathway and job workshop, employability training for local community, community classroom and IT support, cafe with supportive employment opportunities for local people, parent and toddler groups, children's groups, money advice and debt counselling, and at least two open days a year. Their bid, which is described in the papers as at the lower valuation that the council had previously received, these were professional commercial valuations we had carried out on this building, but there were two different types of valuation. One was on the building itself, as it stands, the other was on the building with a chunk of the car park included, and clearly that was a higher valuation. So, the bid value by Cornerstone is actually in accordance with the professional valuation that we had carried out on this building, and I think that's an important thing to note. I want to touch on a few things which have been circulating on social media in the last few days, and not least of which a number of allegations, which we refute. First of all, that senior officers have a conflict of interest. We have legal advice on tables tonight for all members to see, and we publish that legal advice as well, which makes clear the monitor officer's opinion that there is no conflict of interest, and that the process rights throughout evaluation of these bids has been carried out properly and legally and in accordance with all of our policies. There have been letters circulated, open letters circulated, which alleged that the church was going to use the building for its own purposes, for its own members only, and be open one day a week. This is not true. You can see within the church group's submission, a number of timetables of daily events, the building will be in use seven days, in public use for six days, and a great deal of public use as well, and I hope that members have all had a good look throughout that. Letter also alleged that this was below valuation, as I've already made clear, it wasn't below valuation. It also made certain allegations about members of staff, which I find really quite offensive and disturbing, and criticism of people's religious beliefs, which I don't think is appropriate at all in this day and age. It's clear that people want to keep this building, and it's clear that we want public use of this building in the future. I think it's also clear that as a council, we can't afford to do the kind of work that we need to, to a building that we don't any longer need. Within the Cornerstone bid, there's a nine hundred thousand pound budget with a hundred thousand pound contingency, so they are prepared to invest a million pounds in this building in restoring it, in redeveloping it for dead use, but also in opening it up to better public use. Although it is open to the public at the moment, it's at best one or two nights a week when it happens to be a meeting here, and I think for the good of the local community, that the Cornerstone bid is by far the best one. I formally move your recommendation, that's within the report, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you. councillor Dorrick, do you want to respond?
I hear what councillor Jackson says tonight, and I too very much refute some of the comments that have been made regarding persons, some of whom are in this room tonight. I think the social media is both a blessing and a curse, and I think occasionally we do see the worst of it, and I wish to, again, place on record my particular concern at some of the things that have been said regarding senior officers of this council. But having said that, Chair, let's look at the principle of the establishment of what councillor Jackson has said, and the need to save money. We all recognise the need, that we are still, despite the Prime Minister's claim to be out of austerity, we are very much in austerity. But of course, the council can afford what it wants to afford, it's a question of priorities, and politics is all about priorities. Mr Mayor, we've never been in favour of the disposal of sale of some of the assets that have been on, including the Town Hall. If you remember things, we opposed the sale of things like the Brockstow Office, particularly in Eastwood and Stapleford, particularly in these troubled times. The disposal of assets like David House is part of our heritage, particularly the norm, and that position remains exactly the same tonight. We oppose the sale of the -- oppose sale of the Town Hall, always have done, always will do. It is a legacy for people of this borough, and indeed of Beeston, and I just wish we had retained the assets for Brockstow, for a council in Eastwood. All of our assets that the borough owned have been sold or disposed of, and I regret that deeply, I really do, in particular things like the cash office. I've seen the introduction tonight of Universal Credit, and our own cash office, forty-seven people, I think it is, are in Universal Credit, forty-five are in Rantley's already, no facilities, no resources, nowhere to go, except to come here and work online. And it's very much the same for the disposal of the Town Hall tonight, Mr Mayor. I have some real concerns for what I've read in the Cornerstone document, real concerns about the long-term use of this building, and indeed, despite what's been said on social media, I'm always a cynic and skeptic of any group or organisation, and what they claim to do, it never seems to match the reality of what happens, particularly in the evolution of time. Things evolve, things change, circumstances change, personnel change, objectives change. So, Mr Mayor, I'd like to, again, place on record my considerable concern at the disposal of this asset. I think what became the party opposition's policies of disposal of assets has turned into a fire set. It seems anything and everything is a problem. It's not a policy I support, it's not a principle I support, I believe in the retention of public assets for the public, and consequently, Mr Mayor, I would ask for this vote to be recorded tomorrow.
Thank you, councillor Dorrick. councillor Lindelaby?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, our members of the public, it's amazing to see so many people here tonight. I also support what my colleague says about selling the assets of the council, and I totally oppose the whole bundle of stuff that we keep getting before us. Our community is really important, and if I do have to back a bid, the community project is the one that I will be going for, because this is truly a community bid. And Beeston, for all of you councillors that don't know, Beeston is a community, and it's what we do the best. We come together to support our community. And I'd really like to say thank you so much to Judith Lee, Brian Machen, and Stuart Craven, and many others that have come out to actually support it, and the work that's been put in here has been amazing. I've seen it firsthand, the stuff that's being put together, and I'd just like to thank you all for doing that, and for all the people in Beeston who have supported that as well. I myself feel very passionate about this building, it is a part of Beeston, and I know you say that it will still be, but I don't feel that it will be a part of Beeston still. My political career started here, in a by-election, that was actually, the count was in the chamber, in the other council chamber, and it was one of the proudest moments of my life. And twenty-something years later, here I am, and also during the mayoral year, this place was amazing to be able to bring people. The people of Beeston love to come into this building, and I'm really, really sad about this. Some may say that the way we're going is we're selling off everything, and the amount of negativity that this group comes from us, or creating in our town, I think it's disgraceful. I'm absolutely, utterly ashamed of what is going on at the moment, I just feel so sad. And Beeston goes through and through, and I really urge people and the councillors to think about this, this is not what we want.
Thank you, councillor. First question. councillor Eric Clegg.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I must rise on this. I've had an immense amount of correspondence from people across the borough, in my patch and in others, and I've taken an inordinate amount of time in the last week and even in the last few days with additional information to understand the options available, to look at the bids in detail, to question in my mind, and I've asked questions, seriously difficult questions of people, based on some of the stuff I've seen in social media, I've been disgusted by it frankly, because what happens when people do that is they take away the validity of any real objective decision you make as a councillor. You have to focus on the reality of the situation you're in, not emotive things, which often are completely unfounded, as we've heard from councillor Jackson's comments earlier this evening. I've looked in great depth, I've questioned the bids, I've had correspondence on the other bid, and what I see is a very professional document, there's been questions, religious stuff going on there, and I've asked about that too, and been given confidence that the work that will be done, if they win the vote this evening, that the Cornerstone Church can do. My question is a bit further than that, in that, as councillors here, I represent Attenborough and Shaw East. The councillors here, around us, represent all of Brockstow, not just Beeston, so I would ask some of the councillors from elsewhere in Brockstow, if we don't get any capital value from this, from a possible sale, we don't make savings, this council does need to save money, your services across the borough could be affected unless we find a money tree from somewhere. So, I think you have to answer that question as councillors, what things can you give to your local residents that are going to be wrapped up in the Town Hall? And I'm not saying that because the Town Hall is going to disappear, it isn't. A final question I would like to ask the officers and councillor Jackson is, is there any way that people question the future of the Town Hall, and what might happen if it's sold? Can we build in a covenant in the sale document that the building must remain for community use as part of its future? I see that the amount of money that needs to be spent here is a lot of money, both in capital and revenue, this is a good way of additional resource coming into Beeston, coming into the community of Beeston, and we really do need, I think, to approve a recommendation tonight of selling the building to the Cornerstone. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Patrick.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am one of the councillors in this very, very place in Beeston West. I speak today because I have been embedded in this community for over -- sorry, for over forty years. I was a founding member of Voluntary Action Brockstow, and presently a trustee of Citizens' Advice, it's not working. I was a founding member of Voluntary Action Brockstow, presently I am a trustee of Citizens' Advice and chair of Beeston Dementia Friends. I'm also a Methodist lay preacher. I'm urging you to vote against the proposal to sell the Town Hall to the Cornerstone. It's very hard for me to do this. Why? Because what the church proposes to contribute to Beeston does not meet our criteria as community work. I also have received many emails and also notice of a petition. But first of all, I want to rebut the disgraceful personal attack on our chief executive that has appeared in social media. There is no evidence what took others to support this allegation, and I trust her as a person of great integrity. The key question tonight is, how do community groups work together? Cornerstone holds a set of beliefs that distinguishes them as exclusive. This actually prevents them from working in partnership with anyone except groups who share the same beliefs. They do lots of good work for others, as does a competing community project also promises, but Cornerstone won't do it with secular groups or even mainstream church groups. Does their exclusive independent operation qualify them for a community subsidy in the form of a reduced price? I do not believe so, because for me, community involves working together with other groups as equal partners, sharing power and responsibility. Let me give you three examples. Universal Credit coming in within the month to Brockstow to help our residents, we are working partnership with Citizens Advice and the DWP, and also Beeston Methodist Church providing financial support this year, and one example of community. And then there is the council's work with Syrian refugees. This has been partnered and helped by sympathetic landlords, local businesses, and local people, as well as the refugee forum. Now, many churches left their premises to local secular groups. Beeston Historical Society is looking for new premises for their valuable archives. You have to ask, and I am asking, will Cornerstone accommodate them? Would they house a Christian Muslim women's group? I'm asking these questions, and another concern is money. The council are offering to sell the Town Hall for under half a million, and it will cost a developer a million to do the same thing. If they don't actually meet our criteria for community work, then they should surely come in as a developer. I love Beeston, I've always tried to work cooperatively with anyone in a community approach that is diverse and inclusive, so I urge the council to vote against this motion to sell our Town Hall.
Tilly, do you want to speak? Sorry. Come, we have Tilly first, she goes first. Sorry. councillor Patrick.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I think before we carry on with my speech, I think it's important to know that I am a Beeston resident myself. I might represent Toton and Shaw Meadows, but I think it is important, going back to councillor Lydell's point, that I actually live in Beeston, so I understand that the feelings that people in Beeston do have towards the Town Hall. But I speak in tonight in favour of Cornerstone's bid, because in my view, their proposal is robust, financially detailed, and provides a clear vision of not only how the Town Hall will look, but how we pay for. Leaving aside the fact that the church will provide pastoral and religious care to many people in Brockstow and beyond, it should also be noted and welcomed that they extended their proposals to benefit the wider community. And when we speak about what that means for the wider community, I've looked at the document, and I cannot find in their proposals anything to suggest, any evidence, that they did not be willing to open the room door for members who aren't religious or evangelical members, all star. At pages seventeen, pages twenty-one, it all lists the wider community benefit. Highlights for me, and councillor Jackson's already said this, it's the jobs workshops, the English language classes, all for the benefit of the wider community. By selling the Town Hall to Cornerstone, we can ensure that the building is maintained in its external form, key features are kept, for example, the stairway, which I think Heritage England suggested that that is a key aspect of this building. And the community benefit is enhanced and ensures, and most importantly, that taxpayers' money is not wasted. Fellow councillors and members of the public, while I understand the emotional connection to the Town Hall for the people of Beeston, the Town Hall is a borough asset, and many people in the borough, outside of Beeston, including Toton and Shaw Meadows, simply do not feel that emotional connection, and I therefore take the view that it's not fair for us as a council to ask the whole borough to potentially pick up pieces should a community group fail. The communities group, in my opinion, whilst I respect it, lacks detail, sound financial reasoning, and relies on grant funding, none of which can be guaranteed. When I was preparing this speech, I thought, do I make it personal? And I thought, actually, I will, because I think it's very relevant, and I am a married, gay man, and to be honest, I'm absolutely disgusted with the way some people have essentially portrayed the church's views as being so extreme that it should effectively bar them from coming for this Town Hall, and I think it's absolutely disgraceful. And it is, after all, the diversity of Beeston, and that includes religious diversity, that makes it such a great place to live, and I just want to put on note that I just think that the scare membrane that has come, like other people have said from social media, really is quite disgraceful, and that's what I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
councillor Tilly Lydell.
Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I'll just speak briefly tonight, because I'm sure there will be a lot of people wanting to speak, and I will be repeating in part what two councillors have already said, but it's worth repeating. I am a councillor for Ward in the North of the borough, and until I was involved with the council, I had never been to Beeston, and I didn't really know where it was. Brockstow is a large borough, and can I remind you that we are voting tonight on the deal which is best for the whole of the borough, not just for Beeston and its surrounding area? At the moment, I am in favour of the deal on the table from Cornerstone Church, because that will bring in extra finance to benefit the whole of the borough. However, I will listen to what everyone says before I make my final decision.
Thank you. councillor Lindley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As you all know, we have tonight a bid from Cornerstone Redeemer Church. They've submitted this proposal to redevelop this site into premises housing their Beeston congregation. Cornerstone's submission informs us that they are a congregation made up of diversity and of different nationalities. There is a photograph in their bid, and they've openly declared that their church is of evangelical persuasion. I, along with other councillors, have received a number of emails, some of them I find disgusting, from various individuals and organisations. Three main concerns have been raised. One, Cornerstone is anti-women. I have never been into a Cornerstone in its church service at Brockstow, I've never entered their building on Gregory Boulevard, although I've passed it many times. A quick Google on their website, on their leadership team, there are photographs of somebody called Amanda and somebody called Catherine. I quote from another page, "All men and women being created in the image of God have inherent and equal dignity and worth." As an aside, some would say they are discrimination. As an aside, some would say that all women shortlists are discrimination. Two, another concern is that Cornerstone is anti-gay and will not perform same-sex marriages. Let me take my councillor's hat off and put on my other hat of a wedding registrar. The Marriage Same-Sex Couples Act of 2013 ensures the religious organisations which wish to do so can opt in to marry same-sex couples according to their rites, R.I.T.E.S., and ceremonies. There is no legal obligation for any church to do so. The act also prevents, sorry, protects religious organisations and their representatives from successful legal challenge if they do not wish to marry same-sex couples. Article nine of the European Convention on Human Rights guarantees the right to freedom of thought, conscience, and religion. We may not agree, but Cornerstone are not breaking, as one email says, any law, or laws, and we must respect freedom of speech, freedom of choice for those who follow a specific faith, and also those who choose not to follow any religious faith. That to my councillor's hat. Now, before we potentially throw the baby out in the bathwater, let's look at Cornerstone's proposal. One, they expand their ongoing partnership with Hope Nottingham. Hope Nottingham is an organisation that award of grants year on year by this council's finance committee, and the finance committee is made up of members from all parties. Expand, two, expand their Globe Cafe, a facility for international students arriving onto the university campus. This is a facility, I believe, will enable students to feel at home when they arrive into this country, and more specifically, NG9. Expand their facility to teach English as a foreign language. Surely this will make individuals feel more integrated in the community. To create small-scale enterprises, this will enable individuals to develop their skills. And to create, and I'll use the word they've used, a community cafe. Community means everybody, and the above points suggest to me that this is a proposal for inclusion, not exclusion. Thirdly, there also appears to be some criticism and concern, a misunderstanding about the use of the word evangelical. Down through the years, evangelical Christians have made a great impact on the way of life, not just in the UK, but worldwide. At the time, they were criticised for what they wanted to do, what work they wanted to enable to be done, but more importantly, let us look back at what they've achieved. Evangelical. Evangelical, William Wilberforce championed the abolition of slavery, got flak every time he tried to propose it. William and Catherine Booth founded the Salvation Army. What a mighty work they did, and what a mighty work the Salvation Army continues to do. They got flak for it. John and Charles Wesley, they didn't found eat better, they built methods that came out of it. And it affected those who were disadvantaged in society. And Methodism still maintains a high social concern and interest in society today. Quick Google. Evangelical Christians have affected and are influencing the world's political leaders. Bob George Bush has helped to persuade the current party of Jimmy Howard. If we're anti-evangelical, we have to select and elect candidates. Gary Streeter, Conservative, Stephen Tins, Lesper, Tim Farron with Dem, and Ian Blackford, SNP. Cornerstone bid needs to be considered on its merits, and I will support their bid.
Thank you. Counselor Mrs. Carr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry if my voice goes off, because I've got a bit of a cold. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, stand before you, I would like to start off by saying that I'll end up with a question here. But if you bear with me for the time being, I actually have serious misgivings about the sale of the town hall under the current prevailing circumstances. And that's where I start from. Doesn't matter who we're selling it to. To explain that concern, I want to read to you from a report following a very recent High Court case, which actually took place in July this year. This case took place following the lodging of a judicial review requested by campaigners called Save Southall Town Hall Campaign, wishing to stop Ealing Borough Council from selling the town hall to a single-faith church. Does that ring a bell? The judge, Justice McKenna, ruled on two separate grounds of the review. Firstly, he found that the council could not provide evidence that they had discussed or considered fully the social value of the town hall. Although he didn't formally find or rule on the second grounds for review, whether the Ealing council had actually complied with their legal duty to conduct a proper equality impact assessment. He did state that if necessary, he would not have hesitated to rule in the claimant's favour. The judge was scathing in his general comments and the process followed, and said that the council failed to have due regard to their equality duties and failed to consider the impact of the sale to the single-faith church or group. The decision of the High Court, therefore, made it clear that councils across the UK must place communities that they serve at the centre of their decision-making process. A full sale cannot be conducted when the interests and needs of the community are at stake. Consideration must be whether to sell the buildings at less than the highest price. So on that basis, some points to consider. Only five per cent of the evaluation weighting used to score the two bids, or we've used to score the two bids, is allocated to community benefit. Thirty-five per cent is commercial. I have not been able to find an equality impact assessment for the town hall sale anywhere within the paperwork provided. So I'm concerned that if there is one, we haven't seen it, and therefore, we cannot make a full judgement today or a full decision. Also, I doubt we can really argue that we have actually allotted sufficient resources and time for members to discuss in real detail the social value of the town hall to the people of Beeston and Brockston. So my question is, given the case law now in place, recent case law, are we running the risk of voting for something tonight which will leave us open to a legal challenge?
Can I just remind everybody, please, if you're going to speak, to use your microphone, ergo complaints, and keep the paperwork. Make way for the microphone as it cuts off the sound. Thank you. Counselor Pallale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our eyes say that we should not be selling community assets. But once they're gone, they're gone. Never ever get anything like this back again. If we, at this moment in time, and it is only a moment in time, do not have full use of this building, then we should be working with the community to make full use of the building. And one of the bids shows that there is an interest to use it. Selling to Cornerstone, as Counselor Rudulovic said, circumstances change. And we will have lost full control of the building by selling it. I'm afraid I sometimes wonder that is there another agenda at work here? An agenda to dismantle this council in line with the ruling group's support? And getting rid of this local democracy altogether?
Counselor Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow councillors, members of the public. I'm against the sale of this town hall. Now, most of you know I'm not a religious woman at all. I don't have any views either way on whether the Cornerstone Church are a good church or not a good church. My only, one and only time that I've ever had any dealings with the Cornerstone Church was in fact, well, and as you know, I run a charity, was when my charity approached the Cornerstone Church of Nottingham to see if we could hire a room, and in fact, we couldn't, because it wasn't available for community use. So, but that aside, I don't believe that this will meet certain requirements. I've worked in the community sector across the whole of Brockston, and way before I was councillor, I was very familiar with the whole of Brockston. And I can tell you that Brockston has very poor facilities for the community. There is a major deficit in meeting rooms, larger meeting rooms, rooms that we can hire for big events across the whole of the borough. This building isn't surplus to requirements for the community. And I believe, I believe, I know that you want this done and dusted. I know you want to vote this sale through tonight. I know you want the sale out of the way. But I believe that it's being done without due consideration. I believe that a very rich church is much more likely to be able to produce a very polished document than a community group made up of smaller charities. And I don't believe sufficient time and consideration has been given to that community group. I think if this is voted through tonight, it will prove to be a mistake, and it will be an unfortunate mistake, and I think we will regret it across the borough for some time to come. So I urge that this item be put aside and delayed to give better opportunity for the community group, which doesn't have a great deal of resource at its fingertips to be able to do a very lovely polished bid and promise the earth, to be able to have the support that they need to be able to get their bid done properly. I think this decision should be delayed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the town hall building is now effectively redundant as far as it's used for conducting the business at Brockston Borough Council. Thank you, Counselor Jatton. The main staff and the IT server facilities could all be accommodated in the Fostrov Avenue building. The same goes for the council chamber. There is currently a large ground floor space available in Fostrov Avenue which easily housed the chamber, mail, and member facilities. The council owns this town hall. It is not owned by the people of Beeston alone, but all the residents of the borough. And since 1974, the residents of the entire borough have contributed towards the cost of its upkeep. If this council has any building that is surplus to its administrative requirements, then the normal action has been that it would be sold or leased on the best terms available. When this situation became apparent, we sourced some outlined estimates of the value of the town hall. This proved problematic, as valuers had no comparable sites to make an accurate judgement. But they added, the building alone was probably up to about a million, sorry, up to about half a million. And the building with a chunk of the car parking of Devonshire Avenue would probably be up to about a million. We then received several preliminary notices of interest from developers, a students' association, accommodation cooperative, a couple of churches, and a local consortium of voluntary groups. There was also large and vociferous comments concerning the potential loss of the building to redevelopment. My preferred option was the sale for the maximum price with a condition to maintain the existing fascia. But following the debate in policy and performance, it was decided to give the bidders from the church and the community groups an opportunity to set out improved offers. These are what we have in front of us tonight. I've read both documents thoroughly. And I do find that the bid from the community group is completely unsustainable. Principally, the income projections rely on room hire and grants. Room hire is predicted at eighty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty pound in year one, rising to one hundred and sixty-four thousand in year three, with grants of fifty-five thousand for unknown sources. I believe that these are wildly optimistic. The proposals would be in direct competition with the Middle Street Resource Centre, Oban House, the Pearson Centre, and also this council. As I foresee, that we will be offering the new chamber area for rent, when it's not being used for council meetings. Mr. Mayor, where will all these room hires come from? We then come to the bid by the church of four hundred and twenty-five thousand plus a package of community involvement. Financially, the bid is sound. This is a well-resourced organisation. I'm very impressed with their community offer, in particular, their partnership with the Hope Organisation. This council regularly awards grant aid. And recently, a month or so ago, we awarded them four thousand pounds this year and asked them to come back again if they had further projects. Finally, I must comment on the appalling efforts, attempts on social media to discredit the church's bid and also the integrity of the chief executive. To me, they were part of a campaign brought about by the realisation that the community bid was highly likely to fail. And therefore, their campaign's only tactic was to attack the beliefs of the church and chief executive. The comments concerning the church completely ignore the offers concerning classes, English classes, community cafe, toddler groups, their partnership with Hope, debt counselling, et cetera. They focus entirely on the church's views on gay and transgender issues. Views, I would add, that are held by other major world religions. Mr. Mayor, you would seriously think, reading the wider social media comments, that the church was going to be putting up no gays or transgendered allowed notices
Do you see weight?
at the entrance to the building? Mr. Mayor, I despair. As for the attack on the chief executive, it is beneath contempt. So, Mr. Mayor, on balance, I'm prepared to support the church's bid. I believe that the retention of the building and the community benefit the church is offering justifies this decision. However, if the council chooses to reject the church's bid, then I would wish to move forward with the sale of the property for redevelopment to the highest bidder. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Counselor Steve Carr.
Gosh, well, I've had to rewrite the start of my prepared speech after some of the things I've heard tonight. Dear, Counselor Simpson, who and what is this council? I would argue, Mr. Mayor, that this council is these people here. Not officers, not councillors. We represent the people of Brockston. Not the other way around, and we should always bear that in mind. I'm a Christian, Mr. Mayor, and in my youth, I was confirmed into the Anglican Church at the age of seventeen. And I campaigned thoroughly to make the Church of England accept women priests, women bishops, and give women equality in the Church of England. I am blown if I'm going to hand over the town hall to an organisation that prevents people becoming an elder. To become an elder in Cornerstone Church, you have to be over twenty-five, and you have to be a man. It's as easy as that. And let's not forget, and you probably don't know this, because there's a lot that you probably, you don't listen to and you don't read. The community bid project approached Cornerstone Church to say, well, why don't we do something together? They were not in the slightest bit interested. And the reason for that is that Cornerstone want to control everything that will go on in this building once they take it over. They will want to control everything that goes off in this building. Mr. Mayor, I have several concerns about this report. Firstly, I'm concerned that we haven't seen an equalities impact assessment. That surely is essential for something as important as this. I am concerned that there has been, there's been no emphasis on local community. Indeed, it had a weighting of five on the scoring matrix, whereas commercial considerations had a weighting of thirty-five. I am concerned that the wording of the consultation about the disposal of the town hall clearly exhibited that the current administration did not have an open mind about the outcome of the consultation. I am concerned that there has been neither an impact assessment nor a consultation of the recommendation we had before us. Tonight, only a consultation on the disposal of the town hall. In the case of Dom versus Hammersmith and Fulham London Borough Council in the Court of Appeal, Judge Ricks questioned appeal citing that the council had completed an in-depth equalities impact assessment and a substantial consultation. He also went on to say that the test for local authorities is that they have had due regard for the matter in question, that is, an equality impact. Not just near box ticking, and that's actually a quote on the report that the judge made. He also concluded that consultations be done with vigour and with an open mind. I have not read anything in this report or previous reports that suggests that we've passed these tests. Mr. Mayor, it is my view that this recommendation positively fails those tests. Mr. Mayor, given this information and also listening to other councillors tonight, I do not think that the community bid has been treated fairly. Promises to provide councillors with paperwork were not initially fulfilled. Indeed, in a recent email, we were told the community bid did not want to see us see them, which was completely false. The emphasis on commercial aspects in the scoring matrix was always going to put the community bid at a disadvantage. The score for the church bid does not take into account the substantial cost in moving IT and alteration to the council offices. The community bid has also been given a zero weighting for robustness of organisation and financial standing because it has not been established and doesn't have a track record. Well, of course it hasn't. It's a community group. The church exists, the community group doesn't at the moment. But I'll tell you what, what the steering group for this community bid has. It has Ray Machin. There was a wealth of experience in community projects, such as the Middle Street Resource Centre. It has Stuart Craven, who was instrumental in delivering the Canal Side Heritage Centre. Why wasn't that taken into account? Why not? Given these concerns and the quoted item of case law, Mister Mayor, under standing order thirteen ten point five, I propose that this debate is adjourned to a time after the election in twenty nineteen. It is equitable to do that at this stage in the current administration's term of office for such an important decision. An illegal vote, and that's what we're risk-taking, an illegal vote tonight could result in the next administration having to bear reputational and financial risk.
I've just made a formal proposal, Mister Mayor.
I'm sorry, you sat down.
No, sorry, I've just made a formal proposal, Mister Mayor.
Yes, okay.
Counselor Carr has made a proposal under standing order thirteen ten to adjourn the debate at thirteen point ten point five. I think that's correct. That's a motion that you can move without prior notice. So do you have a second accord?
My second up.
People's Speaker?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. We've given additional time, we've gone through all the steps. The monitoring officer would not have allowed this item to get on to the agenda if it were an illegal vote. Counselor Carr, he well knows. I don't think delaying things until after the election is a wise move. We have a lady who's been through years and delayed things for six, any period of time before the elections. We sort of feel hamstrung for doing anything at all in the last twelve months. And how long, where do you draw the line on what point do you, what point do you draw the line? You will take a vote, no doubt, on whether we adjourn this debate, but I certainly wouldn't support it, Mister Mayor.
Counselor O'Donoghue.
Chair, I understand what Counselor Carr has requested and I respect the decision of the controlling group to oppose that. However, I support the adjournment, Chair. I think it would give at least opportunity for a new administration, rather than the final year of this administration, to look at the proposals in a much more long-term view, rather than the disposal of yet another asset. Chair, as I've said before, I am always against the disposal of assets. It's a belief that I have, that they are for the community. And I represent East, the poorest part of the borough. And yet we are prepared and am prepared to stand up tonight and say that we support the retention of the town hall of Britain's cultural heritage. So that will answer some of your questions. We're proud of Brookstone and we're proud of our heritage and our background. But Chair, I would support the adjournment tonight, the vote until after the election, to allow a new administration to take in view and consider, monitor and consideration of the future of town hall.
Thank you. Counselor O'Donoghue wants to speak.
Mister Mayor, could I ask for a recorded vote, please? Of the adjournment? So those, for the adjournment, say four, those against, against and those abstained, you say abstained. Counselor Atherton?
Against.
Counselor David Backshaw?
Four.
Counselor Susan Backshaw?
Four.
Counselor Ball?
Against.
Counselor Briggs?
Against.
Counselor Brindley?
Against.
Counselor Brown?
Against.
Counselor Burnett?
Against.
Counselor Barbara Carr?
Four.
Counselor Steve Carr?
Four.
Counselor Crowe?
Against.
Counselor Kubli?
Against.
Counselor Cullen?
Four.
Counselor Darby?
Four.
Counselor Dodi?
Against.
Counselor Eason?
Against.
Counselor Fletcher?
Against.
Counselor Gould?
Against.
Counselor Handley, John Handley?
Against.
Counselor Margaret Handley?
Against.
Counselor Harper?
Against.
Counselor Jackson?
Against.
Counselor Kerry, Eric Kerry, sorry.
Against.
Counselor Stephanie Kerry?
Against.
Counselor, what is it, Alice Santot, is it? Linda, Linda Lally? Four. Counselor Pat Lally?
Four.
Counselor Longdon?
Against.
Counselor McCrae?
Four.
Counselor Marshall?
Four.
Counselor Masters?
Four.
Counselor McGrath?
Four.
Counselor Gillowey?
Against.
Counselor Philip Owen?
Against.
Counselor Patrick?
Four.
Counselor Dooluvich?
Four.
Counselor Rice?
Four.
That's against, isn't it? Counselor? Yeah, that's against, Counselor Rice. Counselor Robinson?
Wake up.
Counselor Simpson? Counselor Simpson? Counselor Stockwell?
Four, we have fourteen, against we have twenty-four, and we have one understanding. Motion is therefore lost.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just start off by saying that I want to join others in condemnation of any inaccurate allegations made to officers of the council? And indeed, sorry Chair, I've just got insubjective.
I'm quite happy to say it now, I was going to say, might something else? The people that have made these allegations, at least some of them, are members of your party, not just members of your party, but select, select.
I was just making, I was just making a condemn, condemning vilification in inaccurate positions against our officers.
Carry on, no, Counselor.
Thank you, Chair, can you keep the leader under a bit more control, please? Thank you. And indeed, I guess the second half of that, of course, is the importance that we expect in our society for people to exercise their individual freedoms in political and religious choices. And we shouldn't at all vilify others who make those personal choices either. There's been a whole host of important issues talked about already tonight. It's important for us to peel back some of the layers behind these issues so that we can understand the real drivers for them. And we've already talked about them to a certain extent. The Prime Minister herself has touched on the fact that austerity is over. And indeed, the Chief Secretary of the Treasury, who was Tory councillor sat in here tonight, but the chief laughing at policy committee the other night, at the statement from their own Chief Secretary of the Treasury that said there wasn't indeed any constraint on the public sector finances or indeed cuts to government budgets, local government budgets, it was just increasing revenue rate impowers. That was a statement three times. And they laughed their socks off behind closed doors when you weren't all up here to see that policy committee. But we're seeing tonight, of course, it has been stated by the leader and by Counselor Kerry that a driver for this choice, and it is a political choice, is the economic condition that this, the economic constraints this council finds itself under. But I say that that is a choice. It's a choice that they are making this decision, it wasn't in their budget passed only a handful of months ago. And indeed, when Counselor Kerry says, what are the options that can be used alternatively to this? Well, he's either been asleep at his committee's or he's been misreading his paperwork or he's got a selective memory because the Labour Group, year upon year upon year, has submitted sound alternative budgets which didn't specify, which didn't specify the selling of the town hall, which included increasing capital expenditure and which would be part-funded by progressive taxation. It would have been part-funded by prudential borrowing and it would have been part-funded by drawing on reserves. So for Counselor Kerry to try and infer that that hasn't been presented to the council is wholly incorrect. And this isn't just a Labour Party position, of course. The most recent International Monetary Fund policy paper has said this policy of fire-selling assets, of selling them to, selling them off under value is in actual fact a fiscal illusion and is the policy of flogging assets which will bankrupt governments. That isn't the Labour Party, that is the International Monetary Fund. And in comparison, Britain ranks second bottom in the Western world, the developed world, and indeed the second developing economist in the world. It ranks second bottom in the deficits it's created by selling off its assets. And you're seeing it here in action. You see the microcosm of what this policy means. And we should reject it. We should reject it not only because it's the moral thing to do and the right thing to do, we should reject it because our economic experts and our international economic experts reject it as well. That is why we should oppose the sale of the council and the town hall tonight. There are indeed other issues. And I reaffirm again, I do not support anybody who vilifies individuals for their personal, political and religious beliefs. But we've got a slight subtext here, it's not just that. This is about affording a church a community dispensation, singularly that aspect. Not about the church that is chosen, but singularly affording a community dispensation as a church to purchase this town hall. Now, I'm a Democrat. I'm a Democrat and I believe that it is the council's aims and objectives and inclusiveness that we should be upholding as a primary cause. And that includes the aims and objectives, the inclusiveness, the lack of discrimination against race, against gender, against disability and yes, against sexual orientation. And that is important if, as a Democrat, and if you believe in this model of democracy that we have, we should be rejecting this bid under a community banner. Because it doesn't mean, it doesn't meet our own democratic tests. Okay? And we should be rejecting on that ground. But the most important aspect of all, of course, is you. Counselor Carr's already talked about it. We've all as councillors sat in meeting upon meeting, full council meetings, committee meetings, where there hasn't been a soul in the public gallery and we've talked as a cabal amongst ourselves. Sorry, Chair. Where we've talked amongst ourselves. The volume of people here tonight is important. It is instructive to us as councillors, it is instructive that on this particular issue, if there is anything we believe and if there is anything that we support, it's that your voice matters. And by being here tonight, it shows that you matter. And if it matters this much, if it really matters this much to the people of Brookstone, then as councillors and as officers, we have a duty to listen. Thank you, Chair.
Mister Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I have not heard one cogent argument for us not to go ahead with the sale tonight. I'll wait for the audience to settle down, I can understand they're getting excited. In fact, I haven't heard one non-cogent argument for not selling the building this evening to the Cornerstone Church. I think the only point that I agreed with the opposition on was when Counselor Dooluvich said that the principles and the principal question is a matter of political priorities. And it is political priorities. And I can't understand a political priority that says we as a council should keep on a building for which we have no use whatsoever going forward, a building that is redundant, that we should keep it on and spend over eighty thousand pounds a year in running costs for that building. Now, if those are your political priorities, Counselor Dooluvich, then I'm glad to disagree with you because they're certainly not my political priorities. That eighty-five thousand pounds a year can be spent on more children's playgrounds across the borough. It can be spent on renovating other assets that we've got. Now, let's come on to the business of our assets. I think it was Counselor Lallyvich said we should not be selling community assets and Counselor Dooluvich said this town hall is a legacy for the people. Well, I just hope nobody leaves me a legacy like this that's costing eighty-five thousand pounds a year for nothing, for no use, for a redundant building, because that is what it is, a redundant building. And let's not forget that. And of course, we're quite right to deal with it as a redundant building and find an appropriate use. Counselor Carr, both of them talked about legal challenges. Well, any decision that we take as a council or any council takes can be subject to a legal challenge. Go ahead, challenge it legally, if that's what you want to do. But that should not prevent us from taking reasonable decisions of the sort that we are proposing to take tonight. And Counselor Steve Carr criticised the decision because he says that the Cornerstone Church will want to control the building. Well, surprise, surprise. They're going to spend approximately half a million pounds buying it. They're going to then invest nearly another million pounds on renovating it and changing it. Of course, they're going to want to have a bit of a say in how it's used. Of course, they'll want to have a bit of a say on how it's used. The two bids had no comparison really when you looked at them. We heard from one speaker, I think it was Counselor Cullen, that they didn't have enough time to prepare the bid. The local community group, they didn't have enough time. Well, I thought that the policy committee actually deferred making a decision to give them more time. And what was the response from that group? We're not going to do anything, we're not going to change our bid, take it or leave it. So I tell you what, we're going to leave it. Because it's not good enough. It simply is not good enough. And don't forget, both of these bids have been evaluated, independent evaluated rather, independently by our officers. Now, as far as the proposed uses are concerned, we've heard from a number of speakers of the benefits that are going to come from the Cornerstone involvement in this building. They're going to provide debt counselling services. Well, isn't that a valid community use? Isn't that a valid community use? We give citizens advice, nearly a hundred thousand pounds a year to do a similar sort of thing. Are we going to get it for nothing now? We're going to get additions to that facility.
Can you let Counselor Edson speak, he's quite pleased.
We're going to get extra resource and it's not going to cost this council a penny. So what a wonderful idea. They're going to provide a playgroup, parents and toddler group. Isn't that a community facility? What's wrong with that?
Perhaps the leader can explain to me what's wrong with that when he sums up in having a parent and toddler group in the middle of Beeston? I would have thought it was a wonderful idea. So let's get away from this nonsense that only, only the community group are going to provide community facilities. Their bid was ill-prepared and financially not sound. As councillor Simpson has said, it is predicated on at least, at least fifty thousand pounds a year in grants coming in. And where do you think they're going to get or ask for the fifty thousand a year? When or if they were to be given a lease? This ask, you are quite right. Brockstow Borough Council, can you give us some money? Nottinghamshire County Council, can you give us some money? So what would be the point? What would be the point in granting a lease in order to try and release resources to spend in other parts of the borough? I, as a council taxpayer in the north of the borough along with many others, are sick and tired of putting money into Beeston Town Hall. Now is the time to take action. We've got a wonderful opportunity to do something. Let's grab it with both hands. You have a duty to the whole of the borough council.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cleverley, you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I am going to begin by saying, like many other councillors on both sides have tonight, how disgraceful the comments against both our chief executives and our head of property services have been over recent months. These are people simply employed doing their job. And I would ask those that have made those comments to think how they might feel if when going about their job, their personal beliefs were brought to the fore. That is wrong and disgraceful. We as elected members put ourselves into this position by standing for election. If you want to criticise us, we have to take that on the chin. We put our hat in the ring. But to do that to officers is disgraceful. I stand here as an elected representative for Kimberley. Kimberley forms part of this borough and not one person in Kimberley has contacted me by any form of communication expressing a concern to dispose of this town hall. And I'm afraid that Beeston is not the be-all and end-all of the borough of Brockstow. It is a large borough and every single person in this borough has a right to have a say. And to me, the very fact that my particular residents are not saying to me we have a problem with what is being tabled here gives me, in my view, the ability to say this is the right decision for the borough. I also have concerns about what is going on with the community bid. And that arises from an email I received that I shared with deputy chief executive on Sunday, which suggested that they are still in talks with a property developer with regard to partly renovating the building should they be successful to residential. And that refers to certainly one person sitting in the room tonight that they were having.
Clarification please, Mr Mayor. I have seen that email, those emails. And I can guarantee that it's absolutely nothing to do with the community, town hall, community bid. It's a completely separate item altogether.
Thank you, councillor Cullen.
I've shared that with the deputy chief executive and certainly one of the responses, it is my understanding, has come from somebody involved with the community bid. And I'm happy to share that with you, councillor Carr. But that concerns me. Well, since it was written to me, I don't know how you've seen it. But I'm not going to get into dialogue with you. And that concerns me. I have looked at this in depth, analysed the advice we've been given by officers, but more importantly, the two documents. And clearly, there is a business case that the Cornerstone presents that is financially sound. And sadly, that isn't the case with the community group's bid. And there was time given for that bid to be worked on. And there are certain resources out there. I know from my time as a trustee of charity, there are resources out there where you can get help towards those things. But from a financial point of view, the Cornerstone bid is the most financially sound. And that is why I will be supporting the recommendation this evening. Because I am an elected member for residents that don't really care in all honesty. And I am also supporting it because it is financially sound.
Thank you, councillor Cleverley. Councillor Masters.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, I wasn't going to speak, so I'm not prepared to speak. So you'll forgive me if I mumble. I just feel the need to stand up and state as a community individual, prior to becoming a councillor, I've worked for a charity as a volunteer for twenty years. And yes, councillor Owen, we have grants provided by this borough council. A little small grant really, but we provide a needed and vital service to our public, including Nettle residents, because it's Eastwood and the surrounding community. Now, I feel you rubbished this community group. You were disrespectful in your comments. If it had been said about my work or any other friends and colleagues I've got that do similar, I would be most upset. I'm sorry, I'm getting a bit choked because I feel so vehemently that this was said with presumption. That the, the, I can't find my wording out, that this group was put forward, just being rubbish. They haven't got the money, obviously, behind them that the church will have, that they've got the drive, the hard, the hard work that's necessary that will provide these services, not just to Beeston. We're not just talking about Beeston. A good, needed service. And we should be supporting these people in a big way. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'll begin by thanking all the members who have criticised the allegations which have been flying around on social media over last week. And for everybody who said that meant that. Greg, when I was, when you invited me to intervene and then didn't want me to, I was going to point out that these originated from somebody, not just a member of your party, but who's been selected as a candidate for your party. No, you wouldn't let me intervene on you.
Can we, can we just let councillor Jackson for next round?
No, it's point of order, Chair.
What standing were you referring to? Your order.
Well, I'm referring to the convention of this council. I haven't memorised the standing orders. I have to apologise for that. But the convention of this council is when a point of order is raised, that you allow an individual to clarify anything that might be incorrect or leading in that statement. The explicit, the explicit social media post made by a candidate standing for the Labour Party did not draw any, was not, did not justify anybody or make any inaccurate allegations against officers of this council. And it's incorrect to infer that it did. There were subsequent posts that may have kind of contravened that. But it wasn't the candidate or indeed the councillor or the Labour Party member who did that.
Thank you, councillor Jackson.
It doesn't satisfy me, Mr Mayor, not formally. I want to get into the detail of what we've discussed tonight and to start off by saying, we're talking about here. We've talked about eighty-five thousand, we've talked about four hundred thousand. We're actually talking net difference to this council over the next five years of about a million pounds. So the decision tonight is to carry on as we are with this building, underused and redundant as it is, or to sell it to a community group which is going to turn it into what they describe as a community hub with all the benefits that I outlined earlier and that members have read, and to make a net contribution to this council's finances over the next five years of a million pounds. It's a mixture of capital and revenue, I accept it. It's a million pounds which can be spent improving services for people right across the borough. So if you don't want to do that, absolutely fine. Look forward to your alternative budget for the next five years that puts a million pounds away. Look forward to you doing that and explaining it to people. That's not what my group's about. We are here as a council and our main duty is to provide services for the people that we represent, from the north to the south and the east to the west. I'll just, rather than comment on everything people have said individually, I'll just touch on some of the main issues that have come out. Several people said, "No, we're selling this building at a reduced price." We're selling it at a price that matches a professional valuation that was carried out. It's lower than another professional valuation, as I said earlier, but that was a different, different prospect. That was a valuation of the, of the building plus a chunk of land at the back of it. What we're selling and what we're proposing this evening matches with the commercial valuation. So let's, let's just put it to one side, allegations that it's being sold at a reduced price. I think councillor Robinson, Richard, thank you for what you said. It was a very sensible contribution. I would suggest you might want to abstain or I'll invite others because it might be very career limiting for you to do it any other way. But like respect for what you said earlier on. But you asked me a specific question about whether I could reassure members that this isn't a fire sale and we're not doing this at the quickest and quickest way possible. No, we're not. If we wanted to, we've got a majority. We floated this idea a year ago. We could have ran rated it through. We could have got this through. This building could be flattened by now. Councillor Simpson said the most money we would get for this building would be to see it a flattened site. It's not listed, it's not a conservation area. We didn't want that. We consulted people, we listened to what people said. We want to retain this building, whatever its use is, for the long term, for the future of Beeston. So had we wanted, had this been a fire sale, had we wanted to get out of it as quickly as possible and take a maximum capital receipt from it, it would have been gone by now. There would have been spades in the ground and a building started here to replace it. I'm sure of that. We haven't, we've taken a year to get this right and safeguard this building, which we are all attached to. And let's not pretend that any party's got a monopoly on that. There's been some talk that the appraisal process of the bids didn't give sufficient weighting to community benefit. Well, the scoring gave, the bid that we're recommending, three on community benefit, we gave the other one one. So it gave more. Therefore, if we'd have changed the weighting and put more weighting on community benefit, then the Cornerstone group bid would have been further ahead of the other bid. So let's just get that into context. You can, you can disagree with us, that's a fact. And changing that weighting would make no positive difference to your case whatsoever. There, there, there's been a letter flying around with two hundred and thirty signatures on it. It, it came with two hundred and thirty-two to start with. And I spoke to somebody who was a signature to that, but didn't know that there were and had their name removed from it straight away. So I've got no confidence that the other two hundred and thirty people actually signed it. I don't know if they signed it, I've no idea. But it's, it, it, let's not rely on that either. Members have had that, so disregard that when you vote on this, this evening. It's not, it's not reliable. Barbara, I think you asked whether we're open to legal challenge. I don't think anybody ever does, is open to legal challenge. Question is, was there any potential that we would be in danger of losing to a legal challenge? As I said earlier on, officers and the most office were not brought as to as if they thought that it was unlawful in any way. If there's a legal challenge, there's a legal challenge. And that will be dealt with accordingly. But we've got confidence in the way that we've gone about this, that we're not wide open to losing in that, in that respect. I feel I should say more in summary, but in reality, I think people repeated themselves over and over. And it's not a great deal more with many issues that I haven't really touched on. I'll reiterate the volume of community benefit that's in the Cornerstone bid. This is not actually getting rid of a community asset. This is a community asset in the creation. A community hub run by an organisation from this building providing services for the people of Beeston and the wider area and some of them which we ought to support. So, Mr Mayor, I moved the recommendation a while ago and I will be grateful for members' support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. Councillor Robinson. Thank you for five members.
The recommendations report to accept the bid of Cornerstone Church has been proposed as a second bid. If you wish to vote for the proposal, state for.
Can I just ask a point of clarity? Sorry, sorry about this. Councillor Kerry asked whether a covenant could be included to ensure that the Cornerstone Church didn't drop the community benefit the minute they got their hands on the building. I mean, you didn't address that, Richard, sorry.
The latter sentence in the, in the report on the agenda deals with a development clause.
We have one meeting here, Richard.
If you show for the proposal, state for. If you wish to vote against, state against. If you wish to abstain, state abstain. Councillor Attenborough.
For.
Councillor David Bagshaw. Councillor Susan Bagshaw. Councillor Ball.
For.
Councillor Briggs.
For.
Councillor Brindley.
For.
Councillor Brown.
For.
Councillor Burnett. Councillor Barbara Carr.
Against.
Councillor Steve Carr.
Against.
Councillor Crowe. Councillor Cubley. Councillor Cullen. Councillor Darby.
Against.
Councillor Dodi. Councillor Easton. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Goode. Councillor John Handley. Councillor Margaret Handley. Councillor Harper. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Eric Kerry. Councillor Stephanie Kerry. Councillor Linda Lally. Councillor Pat Lally. Councillor Longden. Councillor McCrae. Councillor Marshall. Councillor Masters. Councillor McGrath. Councillor Gilloway. Councillor Philipowe. Councillor Patrick. Councillor Adulovic. Councillor Rice. Councillor Robinson. Councillor Simpson. Councillor Stockwell. Okay.
Okay, four twenty-four, against thirteen, abstentions two. The motion is lost.
Shame on you, shame on you. Shame on you.
The motion is carried.
Shame on you. Shame on you. This is a secular society. Shame on you.